I think we're good.
Okay, at this time, I call to order this public hearing of the Bonner County Hearing Examiner on May 7, 2025, at 1:31 in the afternoon. We are located in the third-floor conference room of the Bonner County Administration Building, 1500 Highway 2, Sandpoint, Idaho. We are streaming online via Zoom and YouTube. Is there anyone in attendance in need of special assistance to see, hear, or participate in these proceedings? Please take note of the hearing procedures on the screens. Are we going to fit the hearing procedures? I'm looking for hearing procedures on screen.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, hit share. Said I sent a request.
It's okay. All righty. Okay, I will be submitting my written decision within five business days of this hearing. At this time, I'd like to leave the room in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All righty. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Any announcements? Any corrections or changes to the April 16, 2025 hearing minutes? Okay, then I declare those approved. All right, today, we are starting with File V 0007-25, a variance, street setback. The applicants are requesting a variance to the street setback standards to allow for a 10-foot setback where 25 feet is required. 0.216 acre property is zone recreation. The project site is located off Bay Drive in Section 33, Township 57 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, and I have no conflict of interest. It's all yours, Dave.
Dave Fisher, Bonner County Planning. Again, decreased roadway setbacks for Joseph and Ellen Wasson. I'm going to get that wrong. Project summary. Applicants requesting a variance as street setback standards to allow for a 10-foot setback where 25 is required. Project site located off Bay Drive in Section 33, Township 57 North, Range 1 West, highlighted parcel there. Sorry, my screen is not showing. There's the site plan showing the proposed house, Bay Drive. Guess that would be east. Background. The land use is residential, currently vacant, plotted log, 2.216 acres. Zoning designation recreation, comp plan designation resort community. Access is off Bay Drive, 50-foot wide Bonner County-owned and privately maintained dirt right-of-way. Environmental factors include map slopes. Does not contain map wetlands, does not contain waterfrontage, and within special flood hazard areas, Zone X. Soil is present under the Pontcharlie silt zone. Waters provided by individual wells, sewage is covered by individual septic even though lot is within the Bottle Bay sewer and water district. Fire coverage provided by Civil Fire District, power by Avista Utilities, and within the Lake Pontcharlie School District, number eight. List of applicable codes. Agencies replying with a comment included Bonner County Road and Bridge and the Bonner County Planning Flood Plane Review. Agencies that replied no comment were Bonner County Historical Society, Idaho DEQ, Fish and Game, Idaho Transportation Department, Land and Health Department, Coop and Pontcharlie Sewer District, and Martin Lives. All other agencies did respond. Describing what special conditions applied to the property, the applicant stated the back half, southern half of the property is very steep, making it difficult to access and build on. Road along the north property line, and it makes sense to build on the north half of the property where the driveway will be coming from. Further back the structure is, the more costly it becomes. Staff analysis. Subject lot is relatively small and appears to have a small building envelope. Area near the road appears to be the flattest and most buildable area of the lot. Center of the lot appears to be the steepest, and any use of the southern portion would require disturbance of the steep gradient. Bonner County Revised Code 12-7.6 outlines hillsides with the purpose of protecting life and property from slope slippage, and Bonner County Revised Code 12-626 identifies steep slopes as natural hazards. Explaining how special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, the applicant's response was, "A well, a well was constructed on-site. This request allows us to be further away and down slope from the well, which allows us to gravity feed instead of installing a costing law." Staff analysis. The subject lot was planted in 1957 under instrument number 61802, purchased by the applicants in 2020 under instrument number 966645. The applicants did not create the size or shape of the lot, nor did they change the natural slope existing on the lot. Explaining how the variance is not in conflict with the public interest, the applicant stated the owners have addressed the two biggest issues, snow storage and adjoining neighbors' views. Both have been addressed through the community and building design for self-credit design. Bay Drive is a public, privately maintained road. Homeowners in the area maintain this road. It is known that snow storage can be tricky sometimes, but this is apparent when homes are within the 10-foot setback. This proposal is asking up to the 10-foot setback not within from the right-of-way, which is approximately five foot back from the actual travelway of Bay Drive. This proposal, if granted, would still allow for snow storage. Lastly, the proposed setback would not stick out in front of the adjoining neighbors' homes. Therefore, everyone's beautiful views would be maintained, including the owners. No other conflicts or effects with the public interest or hazards are anticipated with this proposal. Staff's analysis. Bay Drive is a privately maintained dirt right-of-way. The right-of-way is 50 feet wide. However, the currently constructed travelway is only built to approximately 10 to 12 feet in width and located on the opposite side of the right-of-way than the subject parcel. Bonner County Road and Bridge did that they have no objections to the proposed 10-foot setback variance request, and the requested setback will provide sufficient space to avoid future conflicts with utility installations and neighborhood maintenance of the roadway. The reduced setback may reduce parking availability. Bonner County Revised Code 12-432 requires two off-street parking spaces per dwelling. This proposal does not appear to be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject lot. There are no other public or agency comments suggested exception. At the time the staff report was written, one public comment had been received. And, subject lot appears to be constrained by size and steep slopes, neither of which are due to actions of the applicants. Proposed site would allow construction with minimal slope disturbance while maintaining space for roadway and utility improvements. Title 12 of the Bonner County Revised Code considers steep slopes as a natural hazard and requires development to be designed around these hazards. Proposal allows for snow storage as well as future utility and roadway improvements. Bonner County Revised Code 12-432 requires a minimum of two off-street parking spaces per dwelling. Proposal may make this difficult, and if approved, would require the parking spaces to be shown in the building location permit plans. The applicants have addressed the issues of views for their neighbors. Public agencies and members of the public commented to suggest that there would be any detrimental effects of public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject lot. Representation highlighting where the building's going on the lot. You can see the driveway in front, the road, off the way. Any questions?
No, not at all. Thank you. Okay, would the applicant like to make a written decision?
Travis Hallard for the record. You're representing the applicants and the owners. Thank you, Planning Department. Thank you, Dave, for the staff report. Here for the Wasson variance, we're asking for 10-foot street setback where 25 is required. Site is located off Bay Drive. You can see it's along Bottle Bay Road and then cuts off before you actually get to the end of Bottle Bay. So, a little history. So, this was created, this lot 15, with a subdivision plat back in 1957 with Bottle Bay Tracks First Edition as the plat name. And then the applicants purchased their land in 2020. The lot size is 0.2168 acres or 9400 square feet. So, why are we asking for this request? So, the owners purchased this, and then upon going to self-credit design for design purposes, they thought they had a 10-foot setback and where 25 is the requirement because of the road frontage. But you can see that upon design, on the left hand, the site plan that was submitted, there's a deck that actually protrudes seven feet from the house. And so, it's the deck that is 10 feet to the property line or the right-of-way. The structure itself is going to be 17 feet. So, like Dave did, I did the same thing. I drew, took the property lines, took the house design footprint and laid it over. The red and the yellow is the lidar, the topography, where the yellow is 15 to 30% slopes and the red is 30% or greater slopes. I added the one on the right because if you do extend it, and you can see it in the aerial imagery, but that is a driveway that comes off of Bay Drive. So, the plowing itself is nowhere near. However, it is within the right-of-way, and that's why we're here. So, in order to get the variance, we have to meet the three criteria. First one being the conditions applied to the property that don't generally apply to other properties. So, given the constraints of the small lot size and the topography, it is evident that the development must be clearly considered to align with both practical building feasibility and the regulatory standards. The lot itself is relatively small with a limited building envelope, and the current lot size actually would not be allowed under today's current county code. Most suitable area for construction is near the road and is the flattest and most naturally accommodating section. However, in the center of the lot, it presents significant challenges due to a steep gradient. And so, if you see all the red and its very limited amount of yellow in the center, which is 50% or 30% slopes, it's much more than the average lots in the area, even the lot directly on either side and across the street. Any attempt to develop in the southern portion would require extensive alteration of the terrain and could potentially lead to geotechnical safety concerns. Bonner County Revised Code 12-7.6, as Dave said, explicitly addresses hillside development, prioritizing the protection of life and property from the risks associated with slope slippage. Furthermore, the BCRC 12-626 categorizes steep slopes as a natural hazard, reinforcing the necessity for caution when considering construction in areas as this. Given these factors, it is clear that development on this lot must be approached with an emphasis on safety, environmental stability, and compliance with the regulatory standards. Any plan that involves disturbing the steep gradient should be thoroughly evaluated to mitigate risks associated with slope stability. And that's what self-credit design did, and that's why we're here today. The second criteria, special conditions and circumstances don't result from the actions of the applicant. As Dave, the planner, brought up, this lot was created in 1957, and again, the lot size would not be allowed today. It is approximately 50% smaller than what would be allowed. And, the state topography on this small lot significantly restricts the owner's ability to build the property, has limited flat areas reducing feasibility building locations, and increases the construction costs due to the necessary grading and stabilization efforts that would be necessary if moved further to the south. Challenging terrain was not created by the owner, and neither was the subdivision or the lot. Current code calls for the 25-foot street setback. At the time of cladding, there was no requirement. So, my client is trying to work within the constraints of the current county code with a lot that was created when there was no code. We're asking for relief from this overburning constraint on this property, which is approximately 50% deviation, with the request of approximately 50% deviation from the current street setback on a lot that is approximately 50% below the lot size minimum that would be required. These factors impose substantial limitations on practical and cost-effective construction, making it essential to consider flexible regulatory approaches that account for the inherent difficulties posed by the lot's natural slope. Again, that's why the variance code is in place, and that's why we're here. Our last criteria is the granting of the variance is not in conflict with the public interest. The owners have taken the proactive steps to address the critical concerns, which are snow storage and the preservation of the neighboring views. Through careful planning and collaboration with self-credit design, Bay Drive, while a public road, is privately maintained by local homeowners who understand the challenges of snow storage. Additionally, the proposed setback aligns with the neighboring homes, meaning will not protrude beyond existing structures and will uphold existing views that the homeowners in this area cherish. With no foreseeable conflicts, hazards, or negative impacts on the public interest, this proposal represents a thoughtful balance between development and community considerations. In summary, the subject lot presents significant constraints due to small sides and steep slopes, which are natural conditions beyond the applicant's control. The proposed site plan strategically minimizes slope disturbance while preserving space for necessary roadway and utility improvements, aligning with Title 12 of BCRC, which recognizes the steep slopes as a natural hazard requiring careful development. Additionally, the proposal accommodates snow storage and future infrastructure needs. While BCRC 12-432 mandates at least two off-street parking spaces per dwelling, the applicant acknowledges this challenge, and will ensure compliance through the building location permit process. Furthermore, efforts have been made to preserve the neighboring views, and no objections from public agencies or community members suggesting any negative impacts on health, safety, welfare, or nearby properties. Given these conditions, the proposal represents a balanced approach to responsible development within the site's inherent limitations. I will take any questions.
I don't have any. You did a very thorough job. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to read the rules of testimony. If you wish to testify, you will need to please state your name for the record. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per person. You may give your three minutes to another person, so they may have up to six minutes to speak, but no one will be allowed more than six minutes. Public comments are limited to the specifics of this application. If you agree with another speaker, please just acknowledge agreement. No need to repeat the information again. Any personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position will not be allowed. Clapping, cheering, or booing will not be allowed either. Is there anyone in attendance that has a written statement they'd like to enter into the record? Any supporting public testimony in person or online?
No online.
Any neutral public testimony in person or online? Any opposing public testimony in person or online? I just have to ask. Anyone in the audience who did not sign up to speak who would like to enter any comments into the record? Okay, it's nothing for you to rebut. That makes for a good day. All right, I'm going to close this hearing to public testimony. Now, I see that there is definitely challenges with that lot, especially with the slopes. And I like that Road and Bridge had literally no objections to it at all, and they weren't concerned about any future development because of where things are sitting out there. So, I think that's a positive. Let's see. I know there was some concern from a public comment about impact to the right-of-way and parking on the street, but I believe that the building location permit's going to handle that. So, I don't think there's an issue there either. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, that's quite the little building envelope they have there left is all. Sorry, lost my place. Okay, all righty. Okay, so I hereby approve this project file V 0007-25, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. Conclusion 1. Conditions apply to the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity, which conditions are a result of lot size, shape, topography, or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. Conclusion 2. Special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Conclusion 3. The granting of the variance is not in conflict with the public interest in that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity of the subject parcel lot. This decision is based upon the evidence submitted at the time the staff report was prepared and testimony was received at this hearing. I further adopt the findings of facts and conclusions of law as written. The action that could be taken to obtain the variance is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in the taking of private property. Okay, so I am closing File V 0007-25, and we are moving on to File CUP 003-25, a conditional use permit, and I have to put my glasses back on. Private community facility. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for the creation of a private community facility. The 60-acre property is Zone Ag Forest 10. The project is located off Lake House Lane in Section 3, Township 56 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, and I have no conflict of interest. So, it's all yours, Dave.
All right, got it worked. Hello, this is conditional use permit file CUP 003-25 for private community facility. The applicable standards listed. Sorry, I'm having a technical difficulty. All right. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for the creation of a private community facility. The property is 60 acres, Zoned Ag Forest 10. Project is located off Lake House Lane via Highway 95 in Section 3, Township 59 North, Range 1 West, Boise Meridian. Here's the overall site plan. Close-up of the use area. Background, the parcel is unplatted, approximately 60 acres, Ag Forest 10. Land use designation is Ag Forest 10 to 20. Access, Lake House Lane, a privately owned and maintained easement, driveway via Highway Environmental features and services of this parcel include map slopes, map wetlands, and frontage on Laker Pond. Though I think it's important I mention the Laker Pond is at the southern end of the parcel, far from the use area. Parcel is within special flood hazard areas, Zone A and Zone X. Water is provided by an individual well with a 2,500-gallon reserve tank. Sewage is individual septic, served by Northside Fire, Northern Lights, and Lake Plumery School And as you can see in the top right picture there, pretty much flat with no slippage, very little, mostly along the water. Water.
Yes. I say water on the.
Bonner County Revised Code 12-223. Standards for review of applicants. Hearing examiner shall review the particular facts and circumstances of each proposal. To grant a conditional use permit, the hearing examiner must find that the proposal is not in conflict with policies of the comprehensive plan as found in that adopted implementation component, and that the proposed use will neither create a hazard nor be dangerous to persons or individuals in the area. And the application is considered complete March 3, 2025. Interpretation of use tables. This section applies as this use is not. The venue use is not directly called out. In the case of a question as to the inclusion or exclusion of a particular proposed use in a particular use category, the planning director shall have the authority to make a final determination based on the characteristics of the operation of the proposed use and the planning director's interpretation of the standard land use coding manuals, as provided in Section 12 339 of this subchapter. In the case of a conflict between the general description and the use table, the table shall Staff response: The Bonner County Revised Code does not have an explicit use entitled event venues. The planning director is required to make a determination based on the direction of Bonner County Revised Code 12 331 and 12 33. Bonner County Revised Code 12 339, classification of new uses within zone districts, is recognized that new, unanticipated types of land uses will be both proposed in Bonner County. In order to provide for such changes and contingencies when the use is proposed that is not listed as prohibited, permitted, or conditionally used in the zone district, the planning director shall make a determination that (a) the use falls within the same standard classification pursuant to the Standard Industrial Classification Manual or the North American Industry Classification System as amended, modified, or superseded. As a list permitted or conditional use in a parent zone district, and it may be processed in the same fashion as the listed use. Or (b) the use does not fall within the same standard classifications pursuant to the Standard Industrial Classification Manual or the North American Industry Classification System as amended, modified, or superseded. As a listed permitted or conditionally used in a particular zone district, thus is a prohibited use in that district. Or (c) the use is unique in nature, and an amendment to this title is necessary in order to allow for its placement within the appropriate zone district. Staff response: Currently, Bonner County Revised Code does not have a specific use for event venues. Historically, Bonner County has permitted these types of uses of private community facilities. Bonner County has used the Standard Industrial Classification Manual supplied by OSHA and the North American Industry Classification System supplied by the U.S. Census. To determine the use that an event venue would fall under, neither source has a specific use entitled event venues. The use of renting the land and structures is described under NAICS Section 531120, leasers of non-residential buildings, and SIC Section 6512, operators of non-residential buildings. NAICS cross-references these rentals with the purposes of promoting various events and indexes various types of halls. The Bonner County Revised Code has a list of use titled churches, range halls, public or private community facilities, but does not define these. According to Bonner County Revised Code 12-800A6, terms not defined within Title 11 of this code or this title shall have the meaning customarily assigned to them as defined in Webster's Dictionary, Merriam-Webster's Collegiate Dictionary 11th Edition. According to Merriam-Webster's Collegiate Dictionary 11th Edition, the definition of hall includes a large, usually imposing building for public or semi-public purposes, a large room for assembly or auditorium, and a place used for public entertainment. The definition of facilities includes something, such as the hospital, that is built, installed, or established to serve a particular purpose. The definition of community includes a unified body of individuals, such as people with common interests living in a particular area, a group of people with a common characteristic or interest living together within a larger society, a body of persons, common and especially professional interests gathered throughout a larger society, body of persons or nations having a common history or common social, economic, and political interests, a group linked by a common policy, an interacting population of various kinds of individuals, such as species in a common location, a state or commonwealth, a social state or condition, joint ownership or participation, common character, likeness, or D, social activity and fellowship, and lastly, society at large. Per Bonner County Revised Code 12 339, the planning director shall make a determination whether the proposed use falls within the same standard classification. The planning director has determined that an event venue meets the definition of a private community facility in the range hall, which are both listed in the public use table VCRC 12 335. Specifically, line 2 of the community definition, line 6 of the hall definition, line 4B of the facility definition, show the intention of the private community facility. This definition can be summarized as something that is built, installed, or established to serve private social activity. Since 2016, the Bonner County Planning Department has had over 10 applications for new conditional use permits or to make modifications to existing permits for event venues on different properties, all of which have been evaluated under the private community facility use. This use was first interpreted under previous director, previous planning director Milton Olderton and the current planning director Jake Gable, and has upheld this interpretation. Sorry, I messed up your last name. Bonner County Revised Code 12 335, public use table. There you can see that churches, range halls, public and private community facilities are conditionally approved in the Ag Forest District pursuant to Note 3. Note 3 indicates where access to the site is by road. The road shall be located within a recorded easement or public right-of-way constructed to the appropriate standard, set forth in Title 2 of this code or in the next day of this title, except where subject to terms of approval of special use permit issued by state or federal agency. Staff analysis was that the access to this site is off of Lake House Lane via Highway 95. Lake House Lane is considered a shared driveway recently named upon our county GIS requirements. Highway 95 meets developmental standards. The Idaho Transportation Department commented that the parcel has a conditional use permit for access to State Highway 95, permit number 1-25-11199A. Standards review. 12-421, performance standards for all uses. The applicant stated that each event will have some noise from the attendees, however, the nearest neighbor is 800 feet away and is a logging company. The nearest non-family residence from an adjoining lot is over a mile away. No light, odor, fumes, or vibrations will even be felt that far. Staff said the requested use will result in additional noise, although the location is remote with adjoining parcels consisting of fishing game property, a logging warehouse slash shop, and other properties owned by the applicant. The use is unlikely to result in fire hazards, radioactivity, or electrical disturbance, vibration, air pollution, or water pollution. Section 12-4.3, parking standards. Table 4.3 has a minimum off-street parking requirements for community halls at one space per 100 square feet of floor area and within 500 feet of the principal use. The proposed pavilion is 2,400 square feet. Based on the square footage, the applicant is required to have a minimum of 24 parking spaces within 500 feet of the use. The submit site plan shows a half acre of parking, but 500 within 500 feet of the principal use. Bonner County Revised Code 12 431F calculates gross area at 250 square feet of parking space, which includes driveways and aisles. One half acre would provide 87 parking spaces. 12-4.4, sign standards. For the applicant, there is an existing sign for the school. Apparently, that was edited incorrectly. Any additional signage or any changes to the existing signage will need to meet the standards outlined in 12 4.4 and apply for modification to the conditional use permit for 12.216. That last part was correct, the school. Not sure where that came from. Design standards. This project falls within the exemption of 12-45383 for sidewalks and walkways where the project is at the end of the road, where pedestrian connections beyond the road are not possible or desirable. Parking is not proposed within the lot frontage. Proposed structures will be evaluated at the time of building location permits. The applicant will provide garbage receptacles and transport area transfer sites after each Section 12 452, site planning plans. Proposed structures will require building location permits to be submitted to planning department in the C conditions. Section 12 453F, lighting standards. Lighting shall be directed downward to the intended area to be lighted. All exterior lighting fixtures shall incorporate cutoff shields for spill-over into residential areas. Broadcast lighting fixtures that project lighting outward rather than downward are discouraged. Outdoor lighting shall be arranged so that the light is directed downward and away from adjoining properties. Temporary high-intensity construction light should be oriented so as to reduce or eliminate glare onto adjoining properties. Free standing light fixtures shall be limited to 14 feet in height. Vehicle or roadway and highway lighting shall be subject to the county requirements. Mercury vapor light fixtures are prohibited. When using decorative miniature lighting strings, bulbs larger than 11 watts each shall not be used. Low wattage lighting emitting diode devices and other lighting that reduces electrical use is encouraged, and backlit awnings are prohibited. Staff response: The applicant did not submit a complete lighting plan. Proposed lighting is minimal and primarily within the pavilion area. A lighting plan showing compliance with the standards of 12 453 shall be submitted prior to issuance. Landscaping and screening standards. Standards in this subchapter shall apply to all new development in the commercial, industrial, and rural service center districts and all other commercial, multifamily, public, and industrial development in other districts unless otherwise noted. For remodels or additions, the standards in this subchapter shall apply where the value of the additions equals or exceeds 50%. On addition or removal. Proposed area of use is blocked by distance and natural vegetation, Highway 95 and public view. This includes a natural buffer of trees, which meets Bonner County Revised Code 12 Bonner County Revised Code 12 7.1, shorelines. Alling shoreline setbacks shall apply in all zoning districts, lake sloughs, ponds, or other similar basins, Clark Fork River, Bundray River, intermittent streams, as shown on the National Topography. At a set, no structure shall be located closer than 40 feet measured horizontally from the shoreline. Rivers don't apply. The proposed structure and uses are over 700 feet from the map shoreline as per NHDS. No development is proposed with no shoreline setbacks. Section 12-7.2, grading storm art management, erosion control, applicability, provisions in this subchapter shall be applicable to commercial and industrial site development and commercial or industrial land unit development subject to provisions of this title as amended, and building permits for commercial and industrial uses subject to provisions of Title 11 of this code, except as provided for in subsection 12-720.3K, the subchapter. Staff said a grading storm art management and erosion control plan shall be required pursuant to 12-720.2B at the time of building location permit. Conditions of approval. Section 12-7.3, wetlands. Wetland reconnaissance required. All building location permits, building permits, or conditional use permits proposed for sites containing map wetlands as determined from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service National Wetland Inventory maps. Following developments are exempt from this requirement. Conditional use permit applications where the applicant can demonstrate on site plan that the proposed building site is not within a wetland is determined from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service National Wetland Inventory maps, or where the development will not create additional previous surface. Property does contain wetlands within the proposed area of use. Based on the submit site plan, the structure is located approximately 40 feet from the edge of the wetlands. See conditions of approval. Comprehensive plan. This proposal does not appear to be in conflict with the policies of the implementation component of the comprehensive plan. The proposal is discussed in detail relative to the individual policies in the staff report. Agency review and public comment. The agencies that provide a comment were the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, Idaho Transportation Department, Northern Lights, and Panhandle Health Department. Agencies replying no comment were Idaho Fishing Game and the P. P. Plumery Center District. All other agencies did not reply. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay. So at this time, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Say anything? He does a good job, doesn't he? Okay. All right. Well, I'm not going to reread the rules of testimony because you guys already heard them, so I'm just going to ask if, obviously, there isn't anyone else here, so there's no written statement to be entered. Is there any supporting public testimony online? to be entered. Is there any supporting public testimony online?
No online.
No online. So no neutral public testimony in person or online? And no opposing, or any opposing public testimony in person or online? All right, and there's no one else in the audience, so no one to sign up. Okay, nothing for you guys to rebut. Yay! I'm gonna close this hearing to public testimony. Okay. No, I think this is kind of a great idea. I'm excited to see how this turns out. I did see that there was a concern from DEQ regarding the public water system status, so I do want to add a Condition B 3 that states the applicant shall meet with DEQ quarter lane to create the transient non-community public work system per the Idaho Rules for Public Drinking Water Systems and DEQ. So I do wanna add that in. Otherwise, though, I think it looks like you guys have done most of your due diligence here and done a good job. All right. Okay, so I approve this project file CUP-0003-25 for a private community facility located in Section 3 Township 59 North, Range 1 West Boise Meridian, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. Conclusion 1: The proposed conditional use permit is not in conflict with the policies of the comprehensive plan. Conclusion 2: This proposal was reviewed for compliance with the criteria and standards set forth in BCRC titled Title 12, Chapter 3, Subchapter 3.3, Chapter 4, Subchapter 4.2 through 4.6, Chapter 7, Subchapter 7.1.7 through 7.3 and 7.6 Bonner County Revised Code. Conclusion 3: The proposed use will not create a hazard and will not be dangerous to persons on or adjacent to the property. This decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report, and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this decision and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in the taking of private property. The action that could be taken to obtain the approval of the conditional use permit is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. Okay. So at this time, I close file CUP-0003-25. Alrighty. Okay. Any schedule reminders, updates, or announcements?
I do not have any outside.
Yep, alrighty. Okay. So, nothing from anyone there? All right, then at this time, we are adjourned until the next planning hearing on Wednesday, May 21, 2025.